Dunsmere to order at 6:00 PM on February 21st, 2019. We will, Julie, please take your call.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Present.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Mayor McKee.
Present.
And Mr. Arf is asking the same.
Thank you very much. Now, please ask everyone to stand for the flag to leave and I'll start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Well, now move to item number four, approval of the agenda for tonight. Is there any amendments to the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
There's a motion.
Can I take the motion?
There's a second. All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor approving the agenda for tonight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, approval of the agenda. We'll move on to the minutes for the regular meeting of February 7th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of February 7th, 2019.
All right, there's a first.
I second the motion.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Minutes for February 7th passed. Item number six, presentations, I don't see any, so we will move into committee reports.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to report to the public that on Tuesday, this Tuesday at 6:00 PM, me and the mayor will be eating and we're going to be talking about potentially making Dunsmere a Pacific Crest Trail town. And we will be talking and updating each other upon Lost Valley Falls. And they're too very, to me, they're real dear to my heart. And so I'm really looking forward to making progress.
Yep, thank you. And if there's any other recreation or trails items that anyone has, please feel free to send a big day for I an email. We can bring those up at our first meeting this year and make sure those get dealt with.
Call me, flag me down, whatever works.
Thank you. All right, is there any other committee reports?
I talked about Neighborhood Watch. We had a fantastic meeting last night. It really kind of blew the people away here, the number of people who showed up, the energy that was there. So just to let people know, we're in the process of re-energizing our Neighborhood Watch program. And we talked about it for a while and kind of got a little energy, but it wasn't until somebody named Paris Petrick showed up and started getting involved and she created a real energy that really was something. We had, I think, probably around 60 people there last night in the middle of the week. That is a lot of people. And there was a lot of good food and a lot of good energy. And I think people came away with a real sense that something was starting and that they're going to be a part of it. I think that was a really good thing. The other part of it was that we were able to get two types of forms out. One form for people to join and be a member of Neighborhood Watch, which simply means that you'll be one of the people that would go out to the meetings and then keep your eyes open and learn how to report and do those kind of things. And then we also asked for people who are interested in being block captains, because that's the way it works. You basically have various blocks, we've identified 15 different blocks. And within that, we'll have block captains who will get together and organize the people in their neighborhood. So our next general meeting that we're going to have will be with the people who have identified themselves and being interested in being a block captain, so they can be trained and then they can start doing things in their own neighborhood. And then at the same time, we're going to get to the point where we will have a regular set of meetings that take place on a regular basis in the neighborhoods. And then again, having the top level come together and have a committee and figure out what they want to do and move next. But we're just kind of planting the seed right now. We will have copies of the forms available in the library and in City Hall and a couple of other places I've heard will also have it. So that, the Chamber, City Hall, will have it so that people can sign up and identify what block they're in and, you know, become a member of Neighborhood Watch. The other thing that we also passed out, and this was thanks to Mayor Lucchese, is that we had a Good Neighbor survey that we passed out. And this was basically an opportunity for people in the community if they were either in need for some reason or if they were able to help for some reason. They were given various opportunities to need help with snow, do you need help with this, help with that, travel to here and there. And I know that the Community Resource Center has been spending a lot of energy and a lot of time trying to get to the point where we could have a sense of the neighborhoods and who would need something special in case of an emergency and how do you get people. So hopefully this program, and this is again the initiative of Juliana, I think that that will be another exciting aspect that I'm looking at combining that with the Resource Center, because it does really fit up their alley. And then down the line, I think we'll be able to get some really good benefit. So bottom line, Neighborhood Watch, growing, exciting, be a part of it, that's all.
Thank you. I apologize for not attending.
Oh, you were, I gave you a minute.
Yeah, sounds out of it, but.
Can I comment on?
Yeah.
First thing I'd like to ask Bruce is when, as you didn't tell people, do you have a date for the next?
We'll look at the next second Thursday each month.
That's what I was waiting for you to say.
Second Thursday.
The meetings are held the second Thursday of every month. And sometimes we have pop-ups and sometimes you're cool. The other thing that was, it was really awesome last night, because we had 10 people, men, women, and children from Paris that are moved here.
Paradise.
From paradise. And it was, it was nice to welcome them. And I think that they were really feeling good about being welcomed and we got some things up on the internet, tell us what you need and we'll get these needs met. Somebody posted, it's amazing what Dunsmere is like for rainy days. So if you all are watching on TV, I would again like to say welcome to Dunsmere, welcome home. And there's a lot of things out there Facebook-wise, or come to the Chamber. Drop off a letter with a name and I will get ahold of you and what you need. And you'd be surprised what the people in this town can do. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't thank you guys so much. The Good Neighbor Survey is something that Councilmember Arf and I were talking about. One of the big things on the survey is trying to identify people who need access to evacuation in cases of natural disasters. So we really strongly suggest, even if you don't need any assist, or even if you don't need assistance yourself, but if you know people in your neighborhoods who may need assistance with their animals, need assistance with themselves, do not have reliable transportation, please share that Good Neighbor Survey so that we can pair people up. The whole idea for the Disaster Preparedness Advisory Committee was to really kind of look at where are these people and make sure that they're getting the services that they need. That was one of the things that happened in paradise, you know, that could have been avoided.
So we'll have to ask if the City Hall could arrange to have a box for the city to drop off in City Hall.
Yeah.
So anybody that picks them up either at City Hall or the library or wherever else, there'll be a box in City Hall where you can drop off and it'll be confidential, so you don't have to worry about it being seen around by folks.
And just to let everyone know, so thank you so much for that. You know, I heard it was a really great event and I hope to make the future ones when I'm able to. As far as myself, do you want to report on the ad hoc committee for the city manager?
No, I thought you, I thought you'd take the lead there on that if you would.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Deutsch and myself did have an ad hoc meeting for the city manager selection and that's being brought to the council tonight to discuss and hopefully confirm. I apologize it was not in the agenda packet, but we do have copies of the brochure that we would hopefully like to approve tonight. There's some extra copies if you'd like to see just what we're putting out to attract people. I have actually already been contacted by potential applicants, so that's really nice. So there's two who've contacted me from different people and I've reached out to one or two people from the planning side who might be good fit. So that's really good and promising that they're actually interested. People want to come here, that's a good start. So hopefully that's a good sign for this election. But we had a good first meeting talking about timelines and we'll share about that the outcome itself. Are there any other committee reports? Great, wonderful. So we will now move into announcements and public comment. This is the time for the general public to come up and address the city council on items that are not on the agenda or items that are on our consent agenda. So right now, our consent agenda has the Hedge Creek Fountain repairs, which will be done by the Lions Club and our lender supporting that. And then the other consent agenda item is our check register for February 8th, 2019 through February 11th, 2019. So if you'd like to speak on one of those two matters or something not on our agenda in the city, please come up and you'll have three minutes. All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. And we will now move into item number nine, Councilmember Kaiser, I believe you have a Caltrans meeting update.
Yeah. Today at the community building, they had a really informative meeting. And it was a meeting for the business pretty much. They were reassuring the businesses that, you know, this is going to be all right, we're going to get through this. And they're going to have another one, don't know the date yet, but it's going to be for the general public. The one thing that, there were like three things that were major points that were brought to me that they wanted me to bring to these people was, do we have to go to Manfred's to get on the freeway to go to the hospital? Well, the answer to that is no. You can always go north. There are no closures going north. Too late. Coming home, coming home, you, they're going to close off Mott and Dunsmere and Siskiyou Avenue, leaving Central and Manfred's open. There will come a time when they'll open Mott and Siskiyou and they're going to have to close Central and Dunsmere will leave Manfred's open. Manfred's will never be closed. They did all this work, so I want to reassure you of something that when they did the first part, all the backup was going up because it had one lane. Well, now we've got two lanes going up and there'll be one lane, we've got three lanes going up, they're going to close one. So there'll always still be two lanes going up and there'll be one lane coming down. In the event of an evacuation, there is a planned place where they'll open up the other side and all four lanes will be going north or south, whatever we got to do. So that contingency plan has been put into place. People are concerned about the events and closing the town down for Railroad Days, the Brew Fest, Magic in the Mountains. Well, unbeknownst to me, our executive director of the Chamber of Commerce has already took upon himself to go with all our dates. They were presented to the contractor, Caltrans pushed this, and the contractors agreed to make adjustments and accommodations to the off-ramps will be open for those days. So our events will still take place, people will come to town, we still got the same issues like parking that we've always had, but we still have the people. The freeway is not going to be closed down for our events, which means they can still cover. I'm going to ask Julie to laminate these for us and post them in the office in front of City Hall, a little window thing. They had a really big one. And for me, you guys know, the big one was really nice. So they gave me this one, it's a little smaller. But it shows the entire work process, it shows the off-ramps that they'll be closing. And this is an eight-month project. If it gets done quicker, cool. The one thing that I was really glad about is the same contractor that did that job is doing this job. They're a class act. They didn't have any injuries, they had, they got high ratings and I'm really glad that it's the same people. This other one that I have is detours and rank closures, is the dates and the times and which ones will be closed. These are for everybody's information, so you're being warned in advance, you'll know in advance. There was a lady at the meeting today and she goes, you mean you're going to close Siskiyou and I live right there, but I have to get off at Central to go home. It's just a couple blocks, it has inconvenience, but when it's all said and done, our freeway is going to be a lot safer and more accommodating, which I think will be is some great news. So I'll give these to you Julie after meeting, we can make these available for people to see out there.
You just want to mention it's only going to be a two-year project now instead of a three, because they got so much work done last year, which is a bonus.
Sure. It's going to be a two-year instead of a three-year because that contractor that I bragged about kicked butt on the first part of the project, so they're like a year already ahead. So if this is a good thing for Dunsmere, yeah, we're going to be.
We'll have to adjust.
Yeah, we'll have to adjust, but it's not forever. And in the long run, it's going to be way worth it. So thank you and I'm glad.
And to add to that, it's not part of that meeting, but I had a meeting with Caltrans to talk about, they will be doing a significant amount of brush clearing along the highway. So they've been doing that for fire safety purposes. So hopefully we'll have not only some good construction, new roads, but they will be maintaining their easements much more thoroughly just because of what happened in the last fire season. So they'll be doing quite a few projects coming up here in a couple months. So, thank you. Are there any other announcements and reports from the council?
You got something? Come on, you got something.
Ski Par's doing well?
They sent an ambulance. Not Ski Par.
No, Ski Par. Are there any reports from staff?
Yeah, I have to report that we have a new staff member for the city, Scott Marcellus. And you may recognize him, he was working as a part-time temporary person in Public Works. We did a competitive process, we had some good candidates come in. One of the things that really kind of raised him above the others is he, on his own time, did the education, the training, and paid for the application and certification to get his distribution certification with the state. So we know he's a good worker, now we know he's motivated and did all that stuff on his own, it really showed that he's ready to dedicate himself to the city. So he just began working with the city, probably like about two weeks ago, a week or so. So, yeah.
Good mayor, congratulations.
Good mayor.
Also want to thank the staff. We had some pretty good significant snow and rain events, primarily snow. And we received a lot of compliments from people that were coming in because of utility outages and just getting to the houses that the crews were out there as soon as the snow started to come down. And they really did a great job throughout the night, working many hours to keep the roads open so people can get in and out for both commerce and safety. So one thing for that, also we had some power outages and utilities. City Hall was out for a while and the heat now is just trying to get back on because we're out at losses prime. So the utility guys were out there, trying to keep the sewer pumps going, keep everything going, they had a lot of hours and so I want to thank them for that. And also, if you could, just when you're ready, ask, we have our planner, Arlene's here, that she wanted to do a staff report as well.
Arlene, if you want to come up now?
Okay.
I do want to say the paws are very nice. I was leaving one morning and someone was going to come by and he waited for me to get out before he put the bird in front of her.
You do have an outstanding.
I don't think he knew who I was, but it was very nice.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring to your attention, we've had some good energy about people inquiring how to use some of the vacant spaces in downtown and that's all great. It brings to mind that, you know, we've been wondering about when we're going to have a parking crunch. And some, for instance, some of the spaces that were retail might want to become cafes that requires more parking. And I thought might be a good idea if you might kick this idea or issue to your Economic Development Committee to find some workaround solutions for parking. And I'll be happy to help, but I think the heavy lifting in the beginning would be more economical through your committee.
Has there been a discussion at planning commission yet about off-street parking requirements?
There was when we approved the new parking ratios about two years ago. And we knew this day would come.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I've got a direction.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other, would you like to make a comment from the Sheriff's Office on your numbers or?
I'll do the staff before when I talk about contracts, that's on you.
Okay, perfect. Anything else from staff? All right, wonderful. No other council comments?
Well, we'd just like to send our blessings to the guy that got hit on the railroad tracks. And our advice would be don't walk through the car wearing headphones and not paying attention. That would be my advice.
Yeah, that is.
Wish him well.
Very unfortunate. And thankfully they did not die, that's kind of.
I commend the sheriff for getting to his block, he was like no man's land there. Good job, guys.
Thank you. All right, seeing.
No comment, I'm just, no report.
No report.
I thought I'd make that report, but there's no reports.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item number 10 for our agenda, the consent agenda item. Consent agenda items consist of proposed actions on business matters which are considered routine, for which approval is based on previously approved city policy or practice or other discussions. So tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda. Consent agenda item A, the check register for February 8th, 2019 through February 11th, 2019. And item B, the Hedge Creek Fountain repairs, letter support for the Lions Club.
Make a motion to adopt, if you see what you can.
I'll second that.
All right, there's been a motion to adopt the consent agenda items A and B. And there is a second, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items A and B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, consent agenda carries, thank you so much. And thank you for the Lions Club for being here and for your work.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Wonderful. So item number 11 is a public hearing, we have none. And item 12 is old business, we have none. New business, item 15, we will first move to item A, the Regional Water Action Group Plan Adoption Resolution. Blake, would you like to take this one off?
I don't know, you are very well versed in this as well, so I could let you take it. But you even know what RWAG means, so.
All right, yeah, acronyms. So the Regional Water Action Group went ahead and did a 2018 update, which was required by the state of California. One of the updates in the plan was to integrate climate change within the document itself, update the project list, and then update a couple of the different sections within the plan itself. And this is basically Dunsmere's adoption of that, saying that we are reaffirming that we are invested in the plan itself. We did that a couple of years back. We are required to do this.
2016.
Yeah, thank you. We are required to do this to receive funding through the RWAG, which is part of the Integrated Regional Water Management Act, or the ERWAG.
Or should?
Or should, thank you.
Isn't that where we got some money a couple of years ago?
Years ago, yeah.
This year, I think we have some, right? Or last year?
I think we need this year.
We need last year. Do you remember?
Yeah, it's not necessarily years, in the first round of ERWAG, there was granted funds, yes.
Okay, thank you. And so this is required, that we have to adopt the update to be eligible for future funds, although the funds are not extensive. It's only about $4 million for two years, which when you start talking about city infrastructure projects, $4 million is not much. But we still might be eligible for a little bit of funding, so I think it's important that we do the adoption. Plus, water is such a big part of the city of Dunsmere that, you know, being part of this group is pretty advantageous for us.
Question. So in terms of what it means for us to, beyond just signing it and voting for it, what does it actually entail that requires anything extra or different than what the city has to do? Is that significant for us?
There is no mandate that we follow any of the recommendations from the plan or implement those ourselves individually. Basically, our only requirement is that we continue to participate in the RWAG, which we have done since, I believe, the inception of the group. And we just basically, I believe Blake goes, as well as Councilmember Arf is the assigned member who goes and votes on our behalf. So I believe Dunsmere did vote in favor of the 2018 update and did participate in the review of that update as well, so.
To be clear, then, our sewer plant and our situation with discharge in the Sacramento River, there's no further requirements based on RWAG's protocols or resolution? There's nothing that would affect that and what would be required to do to receive these funds?
No. There's basically no added requirement unless for adoption. Basically just says that we're good with it, which we've participated throughout the process of reviewing the document and that, you know, we would like to be eligible with our project list.
I think this name's changed like seven times, you know? But it's RWAG now, it's the same thing, so.
It just changed once.
It was RWAG or something one time.
It was, it was.
Anyway, would you like to add anything else, Blake?
That was beautiful.
Thank you.
I'm a mayor, I could not have done it better myself.
Water. All right, thank you. So I will open this up for public comment. So again, public comment is open for anyone who's here in the audience to come up and make a comment on this item. You have three minutes, so if anyone would like to come up, please feel free to do so.
Carol Cedar Street, Harris Room. I'm just, this is sort of related to this, but not specific. After this council meeting, is there any like notes or anything? So, because, you know, I'm like really interested in the water thing, but I didn't catch every detail of what you were talking about or the name of the acronym and stuff. Is there a little thing that's published on the website, like, sort of like a review of what happened?
There is a staff report.
A staff report?
It's published.
Yep, there's a staff report in the agenda itself on page ten, but the RWAG is a meeting that's open to the public and they have their own website. And so we can give you some information on that if you'd like to take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. You know my gut.
All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments? All right, so you know any other public comments, I'll close the public comment section for this item and move to council discussion.
Bill Brainerd?
I just have a question that, well, see, you can jump it up. Julie, what's the number on this resolution?
Number six.
I know what you're asking.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-6, a resolution of the city of Dunsmere adopting the 2018 Upper Sacramento, McLeod, and Lower Pitt Rivers Integrated Regional Water Management Plan Update.
By Title Oden.
By Title Oden.
Is there a second? All right, there's been a motion, a second, and seeing no other discussion, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2019-06, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 15, the Goals and Vision Statement. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a topic that was discussed earlier in the year, where we're looking at, looking at where we were with existing goals and where we want to go for next year, primarily in the budget. One of the ways to view goals is it's something that we strive to achieve, but we also have to make sure that we have the resources identified on how we're going to ensure accountability and success in achieving those goals. So that's why we look to put those in the budgets. And if it's a budget item, if that goes to a goal, it should get a higher priority, by staff and most likely by council. So what we have in the package is we've included the Resolution 2017-02, which identifies the current six goals that are in the current year's budget. And we also have the vision statement. There were some questions about, do we want to revisit the vision statement to see if it's appropriate for the city of Dunsmere? So I've also included the vision statement from the budget as well. So if it's okay with the council, I can start with the vision statement, if that's okay with the council.
If I could, Madam Mayor, before that, interject one piece of information was, we went through two different workshops. And so this was something that was honed out by the people who came together first and then kind of took that information, then came up and put it together here. So I'm not sure, I just want to say that it wasn't that it just came out of the thin air. It does represent a community effort to bring it to this point.
Yeah, thank you. The vision statement was something where the city council and we solicited the community to come in and be involved in the development of the vision statement. And I believe it was a huge success, a great turnout. And we really looked at areas of like economics, historic, history, what are the values? And we started, Julie did a great job of really writing down a lot of the verbs and adjectives. And then we started to, and staff got together and kind of boiled those things down and brought back a more concise, okay, this is kind of where all these different categories were kind of focusing towards these areas. And then we, the group then took those things and came up with what we have in the budget right now and what was adopted by the city council. And the vision statement that we And the vision statement that we have is, in Dunsmere, we commit to building on our heritage while enhancing the quality of life for all. We collaborate to foster pride, develop a vibrant and diverse economy, preserve our mountain environment, and celebrate our active and creative community. Short, concise, and really, from what the committee was saying, gets to who we are in the city of Dunsmere. So that's up for questions today, is to, is that what we want to look at as who we want to be going forward as a community? And this was really a community vision statement, more than it was the city of Dunsmere vision statement, so, which were a part of that. So we brought the community in, got this, and we strive to be a support to that community vision. The goals, we have six goals that were identified. And in the budget, these goals are listed with goal outcome. And I can touch on those briefly. The first goal was identify infrastructure needs. And Pace Engineering has been just doing an excellent job in helping the city obtain funding to do studies. We have a sewer master plan, water master plan. And they've also helped out with getting some of these projects in place from prior year grants. And we're working with them right now. Blake is actually working right now on getting a USDA application prepared to have Pace Civil Engineering assist us with that as well, looking at the new take project. We were hoping to get grant funds for that, but unfortunately, they did materialize, and we're looking at other options to keep that project moving forward. We do have design at about eighty-five percent. So infrastructures with staff and with Pace Civil Engineering, I think the city's got a good handle on identifying infrastructure needs, especially with this sewer and water master plan. We do have a pavement management plan as well, and an airport layout plan for the airport, and also with the LTC. There was a regional study that was done on roads throughout the county. We need to do something about our roads in some way. Address marijuana, which now would be called cannabis. I think everyone's familiar with where we're at in that process. The city council has approved both the cannabis ordinance and the zoning aspect of the cannabis for commercial activity. Also, the cannabis ordinance just allows the residential side for six plants for each resident without any kind of application or permitting. And we are looking to come at the next city council meeting with a contract and a resolution for fees to get that aspect where the commercial side can actually apply to get licenses. So that's made a lot of progress, especially most recently. We did have a cannabis task force that did a lot of hours leading up to where we are today. Develop sidewalk maintenance program. There hasn't been a lot of money put into the sidewalk program. We've tried each year to get money in there. It's one of those things that's been difficult to fund because of the resources for the general fund. But I believe we've been pretty successful, especially this year, where we took gas tax funds and we did the civic sidewalk program, where we have the sidewalk over north of city hall and over by US Bank. We're still waiting on the bus shelters to come in at the north city hall parking lot. And we also did a, we partnered with the county as well to do a number of really bad areas of the sidewalk. The memorial fountain was one of those. We had a sidewalk here just outside of city council chambers, and another one that's up by the north part of town, by the memorial fountain. So we worked with the county public works department, our staff and their staff worked together to keep costs down, and that was very successful, and I really appreciate that collaboration. Investigate options of annexations. Had a series of talks with different council members, and at times from some people from the public about options for annexations. I've dealt with annexations in the past, and this is something where, you know, I see the growth of the city of Dunsmere to the north, because that's, we have already kind of a flag lot that goes out to the airport. And to really look at bringing in our sphere of influence out, or city limits out to that area, and there's a lot of room for development out there, so the city can kind of sculpt that as the city sees fit. To the south, it's a possibility to annex up to the south. The question with annexing to the south, in the studies I've done before, the requirement for LAFCO is one of the things they're going to want to see is a delivery of services and a cost analysis. We currently deliver services out there through water and wastewater. The other service that would need to be delivered, if we look at annex, would be the policing service, fire service, code enforcement, roads, snow, all those types of things, which are typically pretty expensive for what we get in property taxes. So those, it would be something we'd have to have, most likely a third party doing analysis to show us if that's something that pencil out. So that would be a budget item, I would say, if the council wants to move forward, and looking to annex to the south or to the north. Investigate feasibility of green waste recycling. This has been discussed quite a bit, especially when we're talking about the solid waste rate study. And we've looked into this, there's currently no facilities in the county for green waste facility receiving. And there is talk about, possibly Mount Shasta's talked about looking at a facility. That's going to be the key, is if we can get a facility near Dunsmere that would host the green waste recycling, then it could be a possibility. Right now, it's just not feasible. And the last goal is investigate options for improving law enforcement. And when I first got here, I spent a lot of time with Sergeant Merrill, who's moved on, works up the course now, but continued to work with the current chief and with other staff on making sure communication is there. And we've had some pretty significant cases that have been in Dunsmere, and the support that we've gotten from the sheriff department on those is vast and very wide. So we've gotten some excellent support there. And one of the things that, I talked with Sergeant Wedstein, was having a larger presence, and I know he's done a little more patrol, where he's walked the streets and, you know, talked with people and go to businesses. So he's looking to do more of that as time would allow as well. So I felt that a lot of the concern over the last year and a half at least, this issue's been addressed. But of course, it's always a question as well. So next round of goals. Again, the budget talked about looking at identifying goals going into the future, and that really is where I'd like to turn it over to the city council, about any questions about existing goals, vision statement, and about possible goals for next year. How would you like to begin that discussion and for getting into next year's budget?
Would you, from your perspective as staff, would you recommend any of these current goals being rolled over into the next year?
I think next year...
Or this year, I guess.
I think the sidewalk program is something that, with that is really the main street trees. There's some significant sidewalk lifting on some of these trees. They're just not the right trees. The city does have an approved list of trees that can be used, that are more friendly to, they don't have the intrusive root system. So if we can get that as, because that's really a budget item, and it's a safety issue as well. So I think that's an important one.
If I could make a comment on that, I know that you had, when you talked earlier on about this larger scale pavement management plan, I got the sense that you had this vision of working with some temps and bringing them in and then setting up a more comprehensive look rather than just patch and patch. So as I understand it, that that could be something that would be rolled over and tried. You weren't able to get that up with everything else going on, is that correct?
Yeah, but one of the, one of the things that I was envisioning for the sidewalk program was, depending on what we could budget, and possibly even, one, the safety would be first. Look at the areas where we have safety issues. The city crews have been trying to mill down the lifting part of the sidewalk, but some of those areas are getting to where it's getting just to dirt and roots, and it's just getting to where they can't mill it, you know, grind it anymore. So I was looking at a way of getting whatever funds we have, and to maximize those funds, is to have staff, poller work staff, the two guys that we have, work with a temp service on key areas. So if we identified an area that needs to have sidewalk work done, we would look at getting qualified staff through the temp service to assist our staff on a case-by-case situation. So we would say, okay, this, you know, we have a week in the month of July, we're going to focus on this area of town. We have a certain amount of money, so we'd be able to bring the temporary staff in to supplement our poller work staff and get it done at a minimal cost. And the other thing is that the county poller works is going to be busy going into next year, since the gas tax did not get repealed, they're going to be very busy. So we're unlikely to get their assistance. But that's one of the things. The other thing would be to possibly partner with some of the residents and businesses, if they want to help assist in the sidewalk replacement, we could work with them and help share a call that might help to fire under the sidewalks as well.
So are there any other questions from council members or staff right now before we move into public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll now open this up for public comment. Those who would like to make a comment on the vision statement, last year's goals, or if there are any goals the public would like to propose for the council to consider for this fiscal year, please feel free to come up. You have three minutes, as always. And please state your name for the record if you want.
Hi, mayor and council members. My name is Rick Chan. I live on Butterfly Avenue. I just had some question about whether or not you would be incorporating, as city manager said, transparency and accountability through department levels for the allocated funds, basically your waste management, your water, et cetera. And secondly, with regard to sidewalk management and bringing in temporary help, would you also be including arborists? Because many of our broken and uplifted sidewalks are due to very large trees, and so I think that that should be managed in a very careful way, is not to damage the environment at the same time leveling our sidewalks. They're just many questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I, the green, the green waste management thing that you talked about, why did you come to the conclusion that that's not a feasible thing that we can look at right now?
There's nowhere to take the green waste to currently.
Okay. And, but when you were talking about feasibility, are you, is that maybe going to be included in next year's item to try and discover? I thought maybe there was something about the airport that maybe it was a site that could be used?
So again, so again, the public comment is not back and forth between staff and speakers.
Sorry.
It's a wonderful line of questions.
Well, I thought, yeah, I thought that we had sort of thought about, maybe the airport might be a good place to look for space, and that's all. No feedback.
Okay. Is there any other public comment regarding the vision, last year's goals, and any other proposed goals of interest?
Sorry, once again.
You got, you got about a minute and a half.
Okay, one minute and a half. Will code enforcement and maybe the possibility of, that would certainly be a budget idea. And before the election, there had been some talk that possibly splitting the code enforcement officer between Weed and Shasta and Dunsmere or something. I remember hearing that at one of the candidate firms. And, you know, I think that that should be something that we, you know, that the city council should take up for future role.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing no other public comment, I will close the public comment, and we can move into council discussion. To keep this a little bit organized, why don't we start with the vision, and then we'll move to goals second, so.
I was going to respond, Mr. Chan. May I?
Yes.
As far as transparency, yes, absolutely. As far as our arborists, we already had our arborists come and identify the trees that needed to go. Part of the problem is, the dogwood trees, the dogwood trees got grass, it's going to seep water, seep water, and it's up. And that's a, it's a something, a surgeon kind of root tree. What we want is a cluster of root trees. It just stand balls, they're not going to go searching water drains or storm drains and, you know. So between Mario and arborists, I learned a lot, so we already had that in, we already looked at that in advance before we identified which sidewalks needed to be, the trees needed to be removed or replaced with the right tree and the sidewalk repaired, and the extensive pieces, just to put that one to rest. And I always appreciate when you come, sir. I cherish your wisdom. I know that you've had a lot of insight with the water involvement in this town, so it's always nice to know that you're on our side, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any discussion on the vision statement?
I like it.
Yeah?
I mean, I felt it was a really good effort, and I felt good about it afterwards. The only thing I would say in the negative is it's a little bit more of a challenge to memorize it. I know you like to go with the slogan.
No, I don't think I'm using it.
Yeah, but other than that, I think it really kind of captures a lot of what we were doing. If you look at each of the different phrases in there, each one of those had a bunch of different things, and people said, let's do that, and that's where they boiled it down. So I think it captures as well, and that's my feeling.
It does have a way, when you have to read it, you kind of go, huh, you know, it does have a...
Yeah, I think for how brief it is, it manages to capture many different things that are important to our community.
And I think that are unique as well. Yeah, typically, in the planning realm, we want to keep vision statements to two to three sentences, and that's it. The minute you start elaborating more, then you get in a situation where you might have conflicting sentences, and it's not very clear.
Yeah, vision statement, vision paragraph, it's not working.
No. Councilor, Brian, did you have something else to add to that?
I'm just giving the vision plan.
No, no. So, all right, it sounds like there's consensus over the vision, so we'll just stay with that. And now we'll move into, for the fiscal year goals, for our next budget cycle, and, you know, for this year as well, to start working on. I will open it up to whomever would like to start.
I think he wanted to hear what's back in the vision was going towards with.
Okay, well, I think actually, if we could, Madam Mayor, could we go through these goals and see what of them we want to salvage, or we were, or would we maybe add new categories?
Sure. All right, let's start with the previous goals of identify infrastructure needs, address cannabis, develop the sidewalk maintenance program, investigate options for annexation, investigate feasibility of green waste recycling, investigate options for improving law enforcement. So as far as moving forward into the next year, are there any that the council members would like to move, roll over into this next year, or elaborate on?
Well, I think the infrastructure, identify infrastructure needs is worded as identification. So what we've been doing, the council and the city's been doing for the last two years, is developing the sewer rate study and solid waste study, two funds that are currently not in operational balance, they're in deficit, each one, one almost a hundred thousand, one well over a hundred thousand. So that's an immediate need for what we currently provide, not to mention the infrastructure improvement needs. We've had professionals in our sewer rate study and our solid waste study analyze the situation, give the professional best opinion. It takes a lot of time, they have to study it, and I think that this goal is fully fulfilled in terms of identification in the study. The next step of this is for us to take action upon this information that's been garnered over the last two years. So I think we might do well, if the council agrees, to move that to maybe just some action item on infrastructure needs.
Well, I think that, it's a good point, I like what you're saying, and I think that the way that it would fit together would be that we have a goal, that we have two props for eighteen, so we have to go through one that's solid waste, one for wastewater. So if we were to migrate this...
So if we were to migrate this to say that, you know, we want to finish those two things, that would be a good healthy goal.
Would you, would you entertain possibly making an overall budgetary goal? One of my concerns as well is the airport and the deficit that we have there. Could we maybe roll the identify infrastructure needs into kind of a budgetary item and say, you know, go through the 218 and resolve those? Also take a look at resolving the deficit of the airport as one encompassing item?
I really like taking the budgetary goal, but I do think there are two distinct things that are both fulfilled by Prop 218. Balancing the funds, I think should be a goal of the city, the separate enterprise ones, all four. And that's, that's the operational side of it and the improvement side of it. When I read identify infrastructure needs, that reads to me more as, you know, two separate items. One is just to run the system on a basic level. We're not funding it correctly. In terms of being able to achieve financial or, you know, infrastructure improvement, that takes many years. It's costs going way out into the future. So I think that both are taken care of by this initial plan and by your plan does both. But I think that generally speaking, we may not have an infrastructure needing water over the airport, but we do need those funds to balance this kind of separate goal.
Okay, so right now I have improve infrastructure based on needs identified and just as a general header for right now. All right, it sounds like there's some general consensus to that. I feel like we've addressed the cannabis item, or pretty much that's going to come to a close here in the next meeting.
It doesn't need our heavy lifting at the council anymore. It's not down to the city hall and management of the administrative process.
Yeah, okay. Sidewalk maintenance program. I would like to agree with our city manager's recommendation that we possibly roll that over and continue to work on the sidewalk. Maybe not necessarily worded as develop sidewalk maintenance program, but similar to, to Councilmember Brian's suggestion, we need to probably start it before with improving those sidewalks and being aggressive about that and fighting funding. But that's my general thought process.
Or like, like Mr. Pechin developed some kind of program where we work with the owners.
Well, I guess what I'd like to see is, you know, when we only have so much money to spend and we have multiple goals, we do want our sidewalks increased. I think it would should be a goal of ours always to seek, you know, spend some energy at least monitoring what funds could be made available for these infrastructure needs because we know we need improved sidewalks. So I don't know how much of our, I guess my goal for it would be to at least spend enough resources to determine how useful spending more money can be in terms of getting matching funds or funds for the sale. Because we don't have enough funds to redo our sidewalks.
We have to do something about sidewalks.
Well, we do.
We just got a lot. We're in court right now with the sidewalks.
I think, I think as one of Brian's was saying, I think as far as a high priority goal, we have the program, we are actively looking for, one of the goals is to improve infrastructure. I think maybe that could be part of that, improving infrastructure. We don't necessarily make it a council priority at this time.
But we still.
But it will still be a city priority.
Still a branch.
It's a priority. We can see that it's a priority. You have time to go take a walk. But in terms of allocating funds, I'd be very careful. Spend two months on that in disregard of other things that are also important. But I think we should always be monitoring what we can do.
Councilmember Rich.
If I could add my old charm from now that I've been here just three years, my wisdom that I've picked up along the line, I think one of the things to know about this particular item is the reason it's on there is because for the three or so years before that, that's what everybody, every day, everywhere you went would talk about. And so it really was a token to say, we hear you, we understand that this is something you're really upset about, and so it's a goal of ours. And I think it's the same way with, you know, say the green waste or something like that. And court enforcement, I guess, is even a better idea. We know that everybody is, and we are, except that we haven't found a way to crack that nut. But the idea, I think, is to say, well, we recognize it, so it's a goal. Does that make sense to what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Absolutely. And so it doesn't mean we have to spend money on it, but it's a goal. It's not necessarily just a fiscal document. It also is a recognition that we're listening to the people and doing what they need, what needs to be done.
Yeah, I suppose, you know, vision and goal, there's some overlap.
Yep.
As my, my approach to it is more, you know, with the limited resources we have for this next budget, where do we want to prioritize anything on the goal? I mean, because I could go on great lengths about where I'd like Dunsborough to be and where I'd like it to be at the end of the year, but if we don't hold it to prioritizing something over another thing, it might be less useful for staff in determining where they should put their energy.
And yeah, I, I understand, Councilmember Brian, your sentiment, and I agree with it. I think I'm agreeing more with Councilmember Brian that, you know, I want to be very aggressive about people's. I do, I'm a very result-oriented person.
You know, we could all just say, we really know we need a code enforcement officer. We really know the sidewalks are.
Yeah, we, we know that there's going to be consistent problems with sidewalk. There's going to be consistent problems with the water lines. I, I think as far as infrastructure needs go, I would rather, in my personal, my personal position, I would rather focus on wastewater, water infrastructure more than sidewalks. And that sounds terrible, but I would rather have clean water and less waste.
You know, it's a sad reality that we have houses filling up with sewage. And I understand that sidewalks are something we need to address, and we should as soon as possible opportunity. And I think we should always at least devote enough energy and site oversight to monitor what can be done. Always, if we hear a new lead, we should be checking on a fairly regular basis about what can be done. But, you know, houses filling up with sewage is a more significant immediate problem for this next year.
So it sounds like we're a little bit split. Do you want to take this one as a vote whether we keep it or not, or you got, how do you guys feel?
Well, as far as the houses filling up with sewage, I believe that we've been working on that with the backflow.
Of course.
Big sensor.
So it's.
Pretty soon that's going. I don't want, because we don't want people saying, you know, hey, come to Dunsborough and you know where the town belongs and that's why our nurses don't walk on our sidewalks. We don't want that. So these are things that we got. And I appreciate the fact that Mark has been nitpicking, you know, living here with Eric, but look what he's got accomplished and just, you know, and that's, I got to give credit for there. So if we can just keep doing that, and when he says working with temps, he don't mean just like that. He means professional people that the temporary services gives for little projects.
Okay, so I, I think that I would be fine to go along with it, but if we look at it and state it specifically that we're dealing with fiscal goals, that we're not looking at any other of the overarching things that really don't necessarily come down to what we're going to spend money on. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, we're just, we're trying to find money to fix all of these goals.
Yeah, so it's money related and not necessarily quality of life or.
Quality of life.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so how about this, you know, I would entertain keeping a sidewalk repair and maintenance program on the goals as long as it's not a high priority.
Yeah, if we worded maybe as monitor all of that, continuously monitor available resources for the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's great.
That's, I mean, that's something we should.
Repair them if you want when we can afford it.
Yeah, exactly. We should never walk away from that commitment today.
There you go. I'm happy with that. Do you think, what's that called, consensus?
Yeah, there you go.
Where they grease wheel.
All right, continuously monitor sidewalk funding resources to make.
If I could, I'd like to bring up the idea about the green waste and kind of explain it a little further. The problem with recycling in general right now, and believe me, when I was seventeen years old, back in nineteen seventy or so, whatever it was, that was my first, all of a sudden wake up the environment and I actually started a recycling company, Hits Rock Boys Recycling. So it's been in my heart my whole life. But the real reality of the situation is, and it just recently got worse because China has stopped accepting our recyclables. And they used to take our recyclables and all of a sudden they just stopped. And, and so here in the local area, when we looked at solid waste a couple of years ago, we got somebody from the county to come down and who's responsible for trying to get recycling. And they don't have an economy right now that will support it. In other words, we can gather all the green waste. There's plenty of green waste. Now that you've got it, what do you do with it? And so from that standpoint, it would take a large investment. And I do agree that the airport, you know, property might be a very good spot for that. But when we're looking at it realistically right now, it's still, we need to find some kind of a sense of how this might work, how the economy might work. We're actually spending money to have our blue bags be picked up because the people at the recycling center have wanted to start, or by state law, are required to pay them minimum wage and et cetera. So we're actually in our budget paying to have the recycling picked up. So I just wanted to say that. And so I, I don't see that being one of our goals right now tied to finances, but I just wanted to make sure that was understood.
And then, sorry, just to add to that, the city is a very active participant in the Siskiyou County Solid Waste Council. They meet twice, sometimes three times a year. And this has been an item on every single agenda. Everyone is having an issue with this. Even the city of Reading does not have a green waste program, and they're much larger than what we are doing here. So I think this is going to get solved. I don't think the city of Dunsborough is able to do it individually. But I would, I would just, you know, I, I would kind of agree with the sentiment that one city being able to take this on is not going to be possible.
Yeah, I'd like to highlight Carol from Cedar Street's comment. I think she was kind of discovering the distinction we have here. The goal here is to investigate the feasibility of green waste recycling. So there it's an analysis of whether we can just sign up for a program and do it now. What are the options? You bring up taking our own land and developing a green waste recycling facility. There we cross over into economic development side of it. We should locate to that. I think we should. That's a different question than what we can do now with green waste, even though they are connected in, you know, the same subject matter. They're kind of two different points of investigation. So I think that this one is worded as closed.
I think so.
Well said.
Councilmember Chris.
That's perfect.
Okay. Okay, investigate options for annexation.
No, no, I got no. No comment. North, north, I can see north, but somewhere I saw blueprints for potential neighborhoods that could be built up there with roads. I don't remember how many houses, thirty-nine houses, I think, was up there. This was where I first started playing this game. So, but there, there's, there's ideas, there's plans, and there's room. North, I'm all about north. South, I got no comment.
Well, I think there's room both ways where to be in that position to expand. However, I'm not sure if the city, based on what I understand, might cost to go through the process.
It's expensive.
Yeah, annexation. I don't believe at this juncture we're able to afford that process. We have a lot of pressing needs. I think it's a good idea with a few more years to grow, considering it an important issue. I think discussions should continue. I think it's very important for people in South Dunsborough, some of them are not aware that they couldn't vote for City Matters. And yet, you know, practically speaking, their experience is that they live in the city. I know some people prefer living in the county. But I think because we're so connected, we provide so many services to South Dunsborough that it's important for us to continue this conversation. For a lot of people, they're not even aware that South Dunsborough is not part of the Dunsborough city.
I would agree. I just, yeah, I would say for this year, again, these are only goals for one year.
One year. It's fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty. So it's kind of a limited focus.
It's, it's an extremely long and costly process. I think if we were to get like a subdivision application where someone says, you know what, I want to build a really big neighborhood and annex it, I think, yes, we would accept something like that. But I think as far as the city pursuing that cost, it's just not going to happen right now.
Yeah, so things related to it probably can be put into maybe economic dynamics all of it.
Here's another thing. Anything you do north is still, still Siskiyou. And south, you got Shasta County. So then you got the two counties. And Shasta County wants those people because that's part of the, how many, you know, people they got in there in town, they get money for.
Do we be able to?
I don't.
You can.
You can.
Well, the damn it, south is just to get between the city, live it there, and down to the county, so.
Well, so right past Cemetery, that's basically Shasta County. That's the end of City Council.
Oh, sorry.
I think that all options for annexation should be considered at the appropriate time, but the conversation should go forward in the meantime. I don't think it warrants the importance of spending any significant resources or energy in this next fiscal year.
We got more important issues, residents trying to raise more people.
Let's build a city everyone wants to be, Mark.
There you go.
There you go.
That's a good way to put it. Didn't I want to be?
I could put one other note on this and make sure next time around we try and get Councilmember Brian as on the lapco. That'll be a strategic move down the line.
Yeah, there is, there's a spot opening up in May.
I nominate him.
Yeah, we're going to go, we're going to fight that. So the next one is investigate options for improving law enforcement. I know we have the sheriff's contract coming up and that's an item for discussion tonight, so I don't want to necessarily touch on that yet, but.
There have been some things that have been improved since this has been brought, brought up, as was mentioned earlier, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, I would agree with the comment about code enforcement. So I would entertain, you know, this council morphing this into investigate options for improving code enforcement.
That's good.
And as a continuation, I think that's something everybody agrees on as far as, you know, and I like, instead of saying hire a code enforcement officer, I think there's a lot of things we need to look at with our municipal code as well about how we do those things. We do not currently administratively take it, which is the new kind of best practice way of doing it. So I think investigating options for improving code enforcement would be an advantageous item for our.
I think so too. And while I deeply appreciate the improved law enforcement in recent years on the sheriff's department and the enormous sacrifice and the depth of their department in dealing with handle diverse cases, what I hear from the people of Dunsborough is that they, they do still want more from their law enforcement. And might, some of it might just be more information, more awareness of what they do currently receive. But, you know, in fairness to just talking to the average citizen on the street, they're not under the impression that their law enforcement here is where they like it to be. And so I think maybe we should keep it because it's a soft goal, you know, investigate options for improving law enforcement. And I think that's kind of one of those things that might be a continuous process for Dunsborough. People really want us to knock out the ball on this and continuously monitor law enforcement.
I, I would have to concur with that assessment simply because we're always, every three years, we're, we're going to renew the contract. So we're always making sure that, and we're always, we want to beg, we want to beg for the buck. Everybody does. But it's just a way of keeping us, whichever council, keeping them on the toes to always make sure that when we enter the contract, that we're always trying to make sure that we, if this, you know, if this beg for that buck.
Yeah, I'm looting it on the goal. Similar, I think we should include code, code itself and the code enforcement policies related to that as a separate one or we can lump it together?
I think separate would be the best way.
Okay.
That way.
I mean, that's what it should always be on there.
I think so. Yeah, I agree with you. And there's no comment to the current law enforcement. It's just.
Oh, you know.
Yeah, we were elected to represent the people right at this table. We appreciate you guys representing law enforcement.
Councilmember Rich.
Well, since we're specifically talking about these goals as to the things of the budgets, I know that shortly we're going to hear from the sheriff's department and I got a feeling he's going to be asking for a couple of two more. So if we're going to say we want to improve the law enforcement, the ideas, we look at the budget and say, well, I guess we do need more money. I, I think it ties together.
Well, I want to keep it as investigate options for.
Yeah.
We're going to be investigating in a few minutes.
All right, so that closes up the goals from the previous year. Right now we have four goals that have pretty much been unanimously agreed upon. Improving infrastructure based on the needs that have been ID'd. Continuously monitoring sidewalk funding resources to improve the sidewalks throughout the city. Investigate how to improve law enforcement. Investigate how to improve code enforcement. Now, just comes to the point where we talk about new goals. I'm from a frame of mind of quality over quantity. So the only thing that, you know, I have that I brought up earlier is budget. That is something from our mid-year budget review, from probably our projections that we have right now that I, I personally am very concerned about and would wonder what the rest of the council feels about that.
So how do you want to just work on budget, monitor budget? Well, I mean, we can say we want to increase the budget, but you got to give us a navigate, navigate the challenging financial situation right now.
Well, with our current situation, we had a budget and we were balanced. We had several events that changed our summer, and now we have quite a deficit. It was offset by some things that were in our favor, but it's still quite a large deficit for a city our size without our budget. We happen to have enough reserves currently to put that bill immediately. And we can go ahead and plan a budget with our current projections without any effort towards increase, without any efforts towards cutting. But we're putting ourselves in a position where one more summer and anything unexpected happens, or winter, anything unexpected happens, and we're going to have to borrow funds, go into a greater deficit cycle. You know, there's an explosion coming if another unforeseen thing comes. And there's two sides to the budget. I think our mayor will probably go into this shortly. But, you know, we need to look at how we can possibly increase funds in a re. But, you know, we need to look at how we can possibly increase funds in a reasonable manner and potentially cut places that are needed because we need to maintain that reserve. We need to be able to handle a summer like this without our city completely falling apart financially. Thankfully, we're in a position to do it this year. But I don't think we can continue with this pattern because we'll be too vulnerable in the future. We're gonna have to make some projections that allow for increased reserves just to replenish what we've just spent or will be spending in the second half of the year.
So what I have is investigate solutions to better balance the budget and create greater financial resilience.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, well said.
That's beautiful. You should go, wow. Really, that's, that's, that's beautiful.
I have a mask in to be.
You can tell.
My thousands of dollars of debt means something.
I like that.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the, I think the bigger thing for me is the financial resilience. Like what Brian was saying is, you know, there are always, you know, one or two off years, but I mean, if we have another off year in a row, we're without a pal. I guess, so that's, you know, for me, I, I see myself having a fiduciary duty to the city to, to really make sure that's okay. So, all right, so we have the budget, so that puts a set number. Are there any other new, how's the approach?
Yes, I think we need to address the obvious, the elephant in the room, the flaming elephant in the room, a deal that we're, we're gonna have the goal to better position ourselves to respond to an emergency here developing plans, committees, et cetera, et cetera. So all that up in the middle. How's that image of the flaming elephant? I'm getting a rubber sticker made tomorrow that says, I'm seeking financial resilience. That is beautiful.
I might have a quick question about the balanced budget. Do we include the balanced funds, balance all the separate enterprise funds?
Yep. And again, I, I think financial resiliency extends to the entire budget itself. And I think that encompasses some of what we did through eighteen. Just making sure that we can take some of those financial hardships. And again, I think financial resiliency for me is also making sure that we're not taxing our residents too much. That's, you know, people have fixed incomes, we have other things going on. And so making sure that that budget, and it does take hard years that we don't take out on the residents wholly, because that's, that's gonna cause a lot more issues.
So we might, I'd like to propose a goal to maybe look into or even act upon all possible ways of revenue increase.
Wouldn't that fit into the resilience, I would think?
Yeah, it could fit into that, but in particular.
I think it needs to be called out in the out conference.
Yeah, but I have something more particular in mind. Actually, you know, I'm thinking a lot about how we can increase funds. There's a set number of ways in which we can take in money and they affect our citizens differently. Each of the set number of ways. You get property taxes, those will eventually move one way or another and help us, but they're very slow moving and they'll react to the general community environment and just desirability of living here. The other way that seems most apparent, you know, we've got 1.3 million dollar budget and you've got $150,000 from sales tax. Transient, TUT is another, almost $100,000. Transient occupancy tax is another high number. All told, it's about 400,000. And when you talk about something like a transient occupancy tax, it's a tax on people that don't live in Dunsmere. It's not a hardship for our citizens. It's people who want to come here and visit. I think we should spend, you know, as strapped as we are for resources at this moment, I think it's important to continue to spend to make our, our city a tourist destination. I think both your sales tax, TUT and TOT, we have a valuable resource to raise funds without it directly hurting the citizens at the same level as rate increases, at the same level as property tax increases. So I, I think because of, even with the sales tax, when we buy in Dunsmere, we have to pay the sales tax or a TUT tax of 0.5%. I think a disproportionate number of dollars spent are by outsiders in Dunsmere. So that the city might overall benefit even from perhaps raising that. But beyond raising the TUT as a possibility, which would be put out to vote and decided by the people. I think we should form, you know, do this under the Economic Development Council. But in terms of a fiscal commitment, I think the city should have a small fiscal commitment to increasing tourism this summer. I think that if we, we give it some resources, it'll grow. It's the water here, this, this giant tree, it'll eventually be the mimosa tree in the middle of town.
All right, so do you want that to read more of investigating sources of revenue that minimize impact on residents? Or do you want it as a beef up tourism efforts?
I want it to be more as allocate, I guess, determine allocation for tourism improvement. Because I, I think that if we can draw people to our city who appreciate this beautiful city and love, it's, it's going to increase property taxes eventually. More stores and businesses will go into the empty buildings. People will fix it up. People will be clamoring to fix our sidewalks if we can just begin this process. And so I don't think, you know, I understand not spending money we don't have, but at the same time, I don't think we can afford to ignore the cause of prosperity while trying to patch up the symptoms of not having a prosperous city in the way we like it.
I think you should be on the finance committee. He is a force.
He is.
Well said, sir. Wow, that's a lot of great information.
Are there any other discussion on goals? Or would you like me to read through what I've got right now?
Where do we got them now? Where are we at?
So I have determined allocation for tourism improvement. Improve response to emergencies and disaster preparedness. Improve infrastructure based on the needs identified in the previous fiscal year. Continuously monitor possible sidewalk funding resources and continuously update sidewalk maintenance program. Investigate options for improving law enforcement. Investigate options for improving code enforcement. And investigate solutions to better balance budget and create greater financial resilience.
I know it's more than we wanted, but I think they're all pretty good ones.
I think we can do that. Yeah. And again, you know, some of these aren't rolled over. We will probably roll some of these over as well. It's just one year.
It's a respectable business.
I think that's a fair respect.
I think though, if they wanted to have maybe one or two items so they didn't have a too challenging job of where to find all the money, right? Just find the money. Just find it.
It'll happen. What is it, mental manifestation where you think it will happen?
I still think we want to put Dunsmere on, you know, donate Tuesday. Giving Tuesday.
All right. All right, that's seven goals. Are we pretty unanimous on those moving forward for the next year? All right, good. And I will relay my notes to you.
Just write down, we all shook our heads, yes.
It's all a series of scribbles, so I will clean that up for you. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
So thank you, everyone. And moving on to item number 13C, the sheriff contract. So I will open this up to City Manager Brayden.
Thank you. So Carl and I have had discussions probably in the last three months about moving forward with the sheriff contract. One of the things that we were waiting on was the sheriff department. But the county has an auditor in looking at costs. What are the costs to provide services? Which Captain Houtman says that he has received those costs. And in that, we're at that point where negotiations can begin because now we know what we have to work with. So he sent an email to me, which I forwarded out to the full council and put on the agenda for tonight, really looking to see what does the council desire or what kind of direction does the council want to give in moving forward with negotiations? Do they want the city manager to negotiate? Do they want council, two council members to negotiate or a certain team? So that's really kind of what I'm looking at for, for direction from the council, discussion and possible action is, do we want to create? Would the council like to create a committee or would they just like to do it on their own? So look for directions for going forward.
Are there any questions for the City Manager or representative from the Sheriff's Office before we go to public comment?
No, not yet.
All right, I will not open this item up for public comment. Anyone who would like to comment on the sheriff contract and the upcoming negotiations, please feel free to come up. You have three minutes as always. All right. Yeah, yeah, we gotta take her. There we go.
Look at her floor. She moves slow.
Ann Powers, I'll number one.
It's all delivered.
A lot of people have talked about the fact that they'd like to have some input too before you do the negotiating for the sheriff's contract. And so I think I've heard several people talk about the fact that they'd like to have a citizens committee of input to the city council so you'd know exactly what all the people in town think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Move into this item. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and I'll open it up for council member discussion.
So are we, are we gonna be getting a presentation tonight with some of the overalls? Or are we just gonna wait and move that on to whatever we decide to do?
I think the request right now is how, how do we want to move forward with dealing with the contract? Do we want to do a citizens committee? Do you want to do an ad hoc committee of just two members going forward, looking at the options? Do you want to just, you need this to staff to negotiate out, or back to us? I think that's what's in front of us today. I like the public comment about getting input from the public. So in my, my personal opinion is that we maybe talk about, you know, making sure that happens. And if we're on the same page about making sure there is a public input element to this, that it decides tonight that we will do that.
I might be in favor of more of an ad hoc committee to address law enforcement options and what the sheriff office can provide for future contract or extension of the current contract. But before that, I think maybe some sort of town hall event. Forum, forum might be a better place for public to really jump in and see more interactive, more back and forth, more structured with public comment.
That, that would be mine among the things. I'd like to have, I'd like to have a public forum. And then I would like to go to, like we had before, was two council members and the city manager. And this would be my third tie. Doing it, if I could be on that, I would really like to be involved in this contract.
I would also very much like to be on, you make sense?
Between a money bag guy and a sweeter, we'll get the best bang for the buck.
Okay, so it sounds like we're coming to a pretty unanimous decision that we'll be forming ad hoc?
Well, we talked about, I do agree that we do want our council members. I'm not sure how and how many and how we pick them.
I think that the committee members should definitely be obligated, if not the entire council, to be present at the forum.
Oh, okay, yeah, the forum.
Yeah.
But as far as.
Do not make it formal, let's up here and up down there, let's all participate together.
The forum will give us a consensus of what we want to negotiate for. When we do the negotiation, it, it only needs to be between the council and the city manager and usually Carl and John Lopey.
Yeah, the sheriff's representative would be there.
He usually brings a lawyer or dude too with him. Either way.
Well, that's could have gotten me, but I'm.
But I think at the forum, I would concur with Dan's. The forum, let's hear what the people have to say so that we know what we want to get out of it.
Yeah, well, let's do two things, I would think. One, let's first meet with the sheriffs and just approach it with what they can offer, what their perspective is. We'll come to the citizens with an ability to educate them on the situation and then we'll all work on feedback.
I'm pretty sure he's gonna give us an idea of what he got off tonight. Am I right?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
If I could before, just one thing I wanted to add in and it kind of fits into what he's about to present to us. I think the key is when we look at this, it doesn't go into what are the complaints we have about the sheriff's department per se, but the idea that it's a back and forth dialogue where part of it is for the sheriff's department to have an opportunity to explain to them the operations and understand the bigger challenges. So it's just spin on the same thing. I'm not really saying a different trajectory, but I really would not want it to just be everyone comes and complains all night about the sheriff.
And again, tonight, we don't have to decide on how that public outreach looks.
Good idea.
I think this is just the first step into something that's gonna be a number of conversations. But I'm gonna hand it over to my representative from the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with what the council just discussed. I would recommend that we first meet and discuss all these particulars so that we can give some intelligence answers to the, to the public when they have these questions. And then you'll have the parameters too of what you can work under. So I do want to say that there's been some changes. You know, every three years we do this negotiation and the multi-year contracts work pretty well. I think they work well for, for the city also. Now, three years ago, the price was locked in for three, three full fiscal years. And there's been increases since then, which the city did not have to incur. And that's the benefit of having multi-year contracts, which we'd like to see again. However, you know, what's happened since then is there's been increases, there's been wage increases for the deputies, and there's been increases, substantial increases in the benefits. And so I have got new figures from the auditor. And the auditor, as you know, for the county controls everything that we do as far as all the outside contracts. And so we are not allowed to gift any public funds.
Neither are we.
And we're not allowed to make a profit. And so we're on those strict guidelines right there. So it's strictly a, you know, business venture here as far as the numbers go. And then service, of course, is what we, we need to discuss and get all the citizens' concerns so that we can improve and meet all the, the service that the citizens require and request.
I just have a quick question about that auditor thing. I'm sure you'll feel that it weren't detailed, but such for me. But is that just the information for Dunsmere? Or is the whole county, all of your jurisdictions broken out into regions? And is there a cost analysis that's average to come up with numbers? Or is this strictly Dunsmere the last three years? And or do you have access to give us the information for the other regions? Any cost analysis there?
Good question. It is throughout the whole county. And the auditor has an ICRP, indirect cost rate proposal. And it, it's broken down exactly to what everything costs, you know, to the penny. And so we have four contract cities and it's the same for all. And we're renegotiating all four contracts every three years.
Well, and then about for strictly speaking county lands, do you do it by region? Do you do the cost analysis or is that all together?
On the unincorporated areas?
Yes.
Such as?
South Dunsmere or.
Well, you know, our, our other contracts. Well, we don't have a contract with Shastina other than dispatch. And that's not a financial contract. We have other contracts with city police departments for dispatch and for records. And yes, that's all based on the same cost analysis.
Okay.
Are there any questions? All right, moving back to discussion. So what I have right now is entertaining the motion to form an ad hoc to negotiate the sheriff contract. The two deliverables, the deliverables to council would be a draft contract for final approval from the council. And the other one that I have is a public outreach plan that would be delivered ideally prior to that, which would outline how are we gonna collect public input? And what type of, you know, that public input looks like.
And that we're also, the third item would be that we're identifying Mr. Kaisler and Mr. Bryan as being members of the ad hoc along with city manager and a representative from the sheriff's department.
Correct.
Can we all just say we all moved what we just said?
Well, actually.
Go right down.
Well, hi. Because of our city manager resigning April, the end of April, it might be wise to have another staff member be appointed to it.
You know, and for.
For both of you.
Yeah, for the ad hoc, it's typically just the, the council members who are gonna be assigned and then city staff allocates themselves as they see fit. So I think they'll be okay. They're professionals. So, all right, so there, there is a, I'll make the motion to form the sheriff contract negotiation ad hoc with members, council member Kaisler, council member Bryan as the members for that ad hoc. And then the deliverables for that ad hoc would be a draft contract for the city council final approval for the sheriff's law enforcement contract. And a public outreach plan with how we're going to collect and put, put from the public and how that will be used in the draft contract.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposition, abstention, motion carries. Is that a good summary there for you?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I also have the statistics for last month.
Yeah, if you want to run through them very quickly, that would be great.
So as you recall, last, last month, Sheriff Lopey and I gave the annual report for 2018. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer that. But for, for January, for the statistics real quickly, there was 520 patrol hours, which is right about on, on schedule with a total calls of 179. That includes self-initiated calls where the deputies actually aren't dispatched to it and they, they find something on their own. Total cases that were pulled were 23 and 22 traffic-related stops, which resulted in eight citations, four arrests, three of felony, and one misdemeanor. And some of the, the arrest details. And some of the, the arrest details was assault and battery. And that was a trespass, or I mean, a trespass arrest on Gleaves. The felony warrant arrest, that was possession of meth. And paraphernalia on Gillis. Burglary and possession of stolen property arrest on Dunsmere Avenue. I'm sure you heard about that one. That was a pretty big investigation with a search warrant resulting in a lot of property returned also. And domestic violence arrest on Hilltop Drive. So two burglaries, one petty theft, three assault and battery, two vandalism, and 13 disturbing the peace.
Thank you very much. So moving on to our other new business, item 13D, city manager recruitment. So as I said before, council member Deutsch and myself did meet regarding the city manager recruitment. So what you have here, I apologize again for not having it for the agenda packet, but I did kind of update our city manager advertisement brochure. And again, there's some extra copies here if anyone from the public would like to take a look at it. One of the things that I will add in here are the city goals and the vision that we confirmed tonight so that whoever's applying understands, you know, what our priorities are for the next year. One thing I would like from the staff that I did not get yet is maybe some more statistics about how many full-time employees we have and what our operating budget is right now.
That'd be good for him to know what he's got to fill out.
Yeah, I put in some numbers that I thought were pretty close, but I am probably not right. So that would probably be really nice to get. I was taking a look at some of the other brochures that are out there. And that's pretty widely used in those so that people kind of understand what they're working with. But again, I'm also open to any type of input from city staff to make this work.
Well, we've got to know about the enterprises. We've got to know about the staff. Those are most of that's in there, most of that is in there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be adding it, yeah. There's a, we can elaborate a little bit more too.
Okay. This looks real good.
Okay. The biggest thing that I know council member Deutsch and I wanted input from the council on was the base salary to list in the advertisement. Currently, what I have right now is the, the language is the prior city manager had a base salary of 105,000 and is negotiable depending upon qualifications and experience. Based on my research with other cities of this size, we're looking at about a salary of 110 to 135,000. I know with the budgetary constraints that we're having right now and talking to the city manager Brandon again, we might not put that salary range on here right now just because, you know, it is a lot of money. But it's, you know, it's up to the council. Once we get to discussion, we can discuss what that salary looks like. But that's one of the items I just want to get confirmed now because it's kind of an important part for the advertisement.
Could we, Madam Mayor? Could you put on there that this is what we currently paying them?
That's what I have right now.
Let's leave it at that. We're not looking to give any more. We're not looking to give any less. That's, if there are people that will respond, they are going to be seeing 105, okay, I'm interested.
Or if you do a range, just down 10, up 10.
We don't want to go up 10. We can't afford to go up.
Well, if we know, you know, from research, in other words, we've taken the brain and applied it and found out that low is 110 and we come in at 105, we're sending a signal.
So again, we're not in discussion quite yet, but that's one of the things that's up for discussion after public comment.
That sucks, you idiot, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it does. And then the other thing too is we have kind of made it a pretty tight timeline of accepting applications until the end of March. Obviously, it'll be open, so we'll still continually take applications, but we'll start reviewing them at the beginning of April. It is a little tight, but taking a look at other cities, there are about a month to a month and a half for the timeline. So that's another item up for discussion after we take the public comment of just confirming that timeline. Council member Deutsch and myself would do the first round of reviewing applications if we had a lot of them with the help of our current city manager. And then the city manager of Mount Chasta has agreed to also take a look at them from his experience. And then we are going to contact the city manager of Waireka as well to see if he would also take a look at the initial thought of people.
He's a good man.
Yes, and he helped us last time with our, our last search. So the idea is just to do that preliminary review of applications. And if we do happen to have a lot, maybe do the first round of phone interviews altogether as a group, small group. And then ideally, what we would do is we would bring the three finalists to the city of Dunsmere. They would be required to give a presentation to the general public, open to the general public about their experience and then give them a brief on our current goals and how they see themselves executing their goals. And then they would also have a private meeting with city staff. And then they would have a private interview with the full council.
Right. If I could add a couple of things? The two things that I would add is first of all, we're looking at also possibly at some point bringing in some citizen members. And so we'll decide that as we go along. And so again, we come up to the, decide how we determine who those people are and go through the process. The other thing is, is that in terms of the actual process we are going to go through, we're pretty much taking advantage of the fact that we just did this two years ago. And so what we end up with then is we have a large mailing list. We have the various magazines and sources that we can go to. The only thing that we lose out on is just because it was so, such a short notice in terms of the way the magazine structures, we're not going to be able to get into Western City. Because the earliest right now we could get into that would be pretty much after we're expecting to have our people in.
Really?
Yeah, so Western City, well, the good news there is it's $1,700 plus that we're spending.
Yeah. ICMA is another really good organization for city managers that we will advertise on. American Planning Association also has a very good base. I did take a look at Plan Edison is another avenue that we can use where it doesn't cost any money to post those on there. And I'm a member of the APA, so I can post for free. And ICMA was only like a couple hundred bucks. It wasn't really that much at all. And then there was another one that Bruce Pope, the city manager of Mount Chasta, had recommended. And I have a call scheduled with a, a network, a person that I'm familiar with who's a recruiter to see what he would be able to do on such short notice. Obviously, not doing a contract with them and spending a lot of money, but seeing what his recommendation would be for getting it out to as many people as possible. Obviously, someone's talking about it because like I said, I had two people already contacted me to have, you know, some informal phone calls about the position. Referenced them to Mark as well to reach out to him. So that's a good sign that we haven't even advertised yet and two people are interested. And they are both pretty qualified with planning backgrounds and city government backgrounds, so.
That kind of matters.
Yeah, yeah, they have.
One other resource we have that we also generated last time was we took a look and identified a particular range of population for cities that we thought might be ripe for having somebody that was sort of a department head wanting to move up in whatever way, become a city manager. So we do have that mailing list that we could pop out our materials to. So what we were thinking at the time was we want to find somebody that's on the up and moving. And so we're looking not necessarily at bringing in somebody who maybe necessarily had been a city manager before, but could grow into it like this guy over here. And so that, that is a list that we could use and again, is targeted at about the right size. We're not going to San Francisco and asking somebody in San Francisco to, you know, see if there's anyone looking for a city manager that's small.
So do you, does anyone have any questions right now about that whole process proposal?
No.
All right. So I'm going to open this up for public comment. Anyone who would like to come up and give a public comment on the city manager selection process? Who would like to give a, a comment on the brochure that was handed out today as a supplemental? Please feel free to come up and address the council. You have three minutes as always.
Just a very brief commentary regarding. It seems to me that one of the most relevant examples of a good search was how Juliano Luchesi got chosen and as a planner up in Mount Chasta. As I understand it, there was an advertisement that you responded to at the university and so forth. And it seems to me that we should be focused in this town about trying to attract younger, as you said, Councilman Deutsch, somebody on the upswing. And I think trying to get somebody in the late twenties, early thirties who has a proper education and has the capability of, as you said, going into the job, I think would be an excellent way to sort of get the thing out. Rather than going to what you have done in the past, as I understand it, older, more experienced, but then again, perhaps retired and this is their second or third one at the job. I'd rather see us take advantage of, of the attractiveness of this town for somebody young, lean in main, somebody that's really willing to get in there and prove that they have the capability of doing this kind of a job and they have a future. So I just put that down as something that I would like to see focused on the town. And I think both of you have come up with some very good points on how to, how to do that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment related to the city manager selection? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment and now we are in discussion. Gentlemen?
I'm glad you guys are doing it because I didn't feel well before.
Can you bring up a point, I'm seeing all sorts. I would like to emphasize this hiring process that it would be nice to find someone who could give us some stability in terms of duration of their time and their investment. Each year becomes easier, I'm sure, in terms of the knowledge base, relationships, networking. You know, it takes a year to probably just find your feet and develop like this. That being the case, I know we've had great many city managers for various reasons in a short time. And even qualified ones leave us because, you know, public comment indicated they were ready to move on. But if we could perhaps, even here, our initial interviews, maybe feel out or explain that we're looking for someone who, who sees their job in Dunsmere as a city manager as maybe something that's going to be a big part of their life.
I couldn't.
Okay, yeah. Who is excited with the idea of making this their life?
Thank you.
Hey, I don't suppose no, you can't go would work? Don't want to.
Yeah, but it, it becomes a very, you know, this kind of rolls into the first thing we have to kind of talk about, which is the salary. It comes into, you know, consistency and finding talent is, is a balancing act. It is one, making an offer that is, you know, befitting the type of executive decision that this position does. And especially for a smaller town, how many hats Mark has to wear is, is pretty significant. So one, we need someone who's going to be equally compensated for that or compensated enough in their minds.
Yes, on the other hand though, the average salary or pay-on-pay of people in this area is drastically lower. And so it's not that, you know, I know you have, right here, we talked about compromise or balancing act. I don't think we can necessarily offer what the national average for city manager be. That might be the top end of our based on qualification statement. Maybe the bottom end of the range should be something more in line with a very, very good job for this area.
I think I just thought outside the box here. I'd like to ask this city manager, what would you recommend we look for?
Well, that's really up to the council, but I would like to note that city managers typically last three to five years. And part of that reason is it's, it's a job that is not always, if they're being honest with the community and with the council, they have to say things that they don't always like to have to say. And that tends to be things that come back and they have to move on. But that's a good city manager, has to be clear and honest and provide the facts. And sometimes that's not always the best thing. So it's difficult to get a city manager that's going to stay around for a long time. But it can happen. And I think Dunsmere is a place where it can. It's a beautiful place. Somebody that loves the outdoors, which kind of tends to lend towards the younger generation. The fact that we only have 12 staff is one of the key things. It's the city manager, it does wear a lot of hats. And they're going to really have to focus what limited time they have on the key priorities, which is about goals. So everything that you're saying, I think is right on cue. And I, I hope that we get a good pool to draw from because this is a great place to work.
And just in case anybody that hasn't caught up to this, I just want to make it clear that I sense and knowing Mark as I've known him for a couple of years now, that this is painting him as much as it's painting us. This isn't something where he wanted to leave. He had thought of this as being his forever home. I know that they went and do all of that, but personal things happen. So I just want to make sure that everything we're talking about, we're not looking past your word.
Yeah, my pleasure.
We just appreciate your interest, council.
Mark's made a good comment, though. In our secondary information for an applicant, we could include the goals.
Yeah, yeah.
Good sense of what we're.
Yeah, I, I left a little blank spot with city goals, ellipses on the second page to put that in there. And one of the things that I did do is looking at, you know, what's the experience and education level for a city manager. I did keep the education level similar to every other advertisement, which is a required bachelor's degree, master's and higher preferred. But the experience, I did drop it. Typically, what you're seeing with other advertisements is 10 years or more for experience. I did drop it to five. Maybe that will, and I, I made sure it was much more broad so that if they are a planning director, community development director, public works director, they would maybe find this a little bit more a little bit of stuff. Yeah, and so they, yeah.
Want to improve themselves, improve what they can do.
Yeah.
Show us.
Yeah, and if, and if anything, you know, seeing that Brandon with your background in public works, that's been amazing for us with the bridge projects and our infrastructure needs. So maybe the lowering of that experience a little bit will get us someone who was a specialist, who wants to become more well-rounded, who may be able to take us there. So I did do that. It sounds like we might want to just stay with the, the language of what the prior city manager makes and that it's negotiable from there. We don't have to, you know, negotiate that salary now and be completely firm. We may get someone and go, you know, who seems to be lower or higher.
I think because we're casting a wider net with the less experience and we're hoping to find someone who's moving up, perhaps in a related element of the city, but it does not, the, it's not city manager experience. I don't think we'd be hurt by putting the range, say, 390, 110,000. To be realistic, you know, we can't go much above that. Most of the qualifications are extreme. And then even at 90, that is a very good wage for this area. And it's a very good wage for someone who's not yet in that executive position in many other.
That's true.
Not all of us, but in many of us.
That's true.
So you'd like to make a motion to change it to the salary range of 90 to 100,000?
I would turn it down to 100,000.
Depending on.
Yeah, and we'll still keep the language and is negotiable depending upon qualifications, blah, blah, blah. Bob, you're cool. Okay, so there's a motion to do that and it sounds like you're stepping in that debate. Let's move back to vote. All those in favor of moving to the salary range, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I will oppose that. I do like the base salary, but that passes. So we'll move to the range.
Madam Mayor, can I say something? Mark, it is my opinion, but you've been one of the best city managers that we've had here. We've been blessed with your talents and you will be missed. And I thank you for, and long hours and putting your nose to the grindstone for us, especially from Montier's first dance when we put in that, the monument at the cemetery. So I'll always remember you for that because that took a little bit of doing. But we'll miss you. And I just, I just wanted to say thank you for many, 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 many years.
Thank you. I'm imagining you two literally dancing.
We love when we have a beer before we leave.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much for that. Are we okay with the timeline? I know it's quick, but I think we can do it.
It has to be.
So we'll pretty much, after, after this decision's made, I, I have time allotted today pretty much to start posting all of those jobs on the, on the internet. And, you know, going back to the public comment, that's I found my job here. I had never been to Mount Chasta or Dunsmere or California. And I saw a really pretty picture on the internet, so.
You've got pretty pictures, so.
The video game we share is a one more week. We can take that off. It doesn't need to be the front of the month in terms of discouraging people, so I don't know.
So first week of April?
Yeah, if we could do that, go second week. I don't want to hire anybody around April's fool, so.
But yeah, so actually, so yeah, so what we could still do is the first review of resumes can still start that first week, but we'll assume that it will be a plethora.
Do we want to all that? Do we want to talk about? There she goes again.
Words. Uh, okay, so we'll move back to the Friday, the first Friday in April or the first, uh, full week of April and the first week of April.
Uh, do we want to allocate money towards this as in, uh, how much are we going to spend for advertising, staffs, things like that?
Let me go through and get the full estimate. We'll come back to Blake with a budget adjustment so we can do that at the next meeting. For right now, I want to make sure that we've got the advertising.
Well, we do need to move on some of these.
Yeah, we don't got any numbers, so what if we get a vote on it? Whatever it is, okay? Why don't we go out and show them?
We at least authorize a.
Not to exceed budget?
Not to exceed budget, yes.
Okay. We allocate not to exceed a thousand dollars. I would be happy with that.
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
I think that'll be, we don't know, you know, relative to all the things you need to do. If that cost us 1,700, then I'm going to have to put it.
That's the one, just, that was just.
Yeah. Well, okay. We got 1,500. It might take some research to get the word out. 1,500 sounds like a compromise to me.
All right.
So you've got a motion for, uh, allocating a budgetary item not to exceed 1,500 for the city manager selection at this point. Um, please anticipate that we may need more once we get the three finalists reimbursed them for travel, so we will probably come back to this. Um, so the motion's on the table. Was there a second to this?
I'll, I'll second it.
And then we need to have a roll call?
I, I have, uh, Councilmember Brian as the first to motion for the 1,500. And then Councilmember Keisler is the second. All right? So we'll do a roll call. Councilmember Deutsch, having a vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler?
Aye.
And then myself will also be an aye. Thank you guys for that one. Um, I think we're pretty much good unless there's any other glaring issues you see with the advertisement.
No, just that you're going to put in our vision.
Yep.
And our goal. So you, you guys will work, what, whatever.
I have another one issue. Did we get a more focused picture of those rifles?
Yes.
Or make it smaller?
Yes, I, I will get you a, I will, I will get you a better one.
Showing you places you can't go. You can't make day with a very.
Oh, I find a, find a big day for me.
Wow, that was nice.
You can be on the public. All right, so it sounds like we're unanimously okay with this for right now. Um, I will also have to get the updated numbers from Blake and, and Mark.
Well, 1,500 is a good, that's a reasonable.
Yeah.
That's a reasonable place to start, especially if we didn't go to be 17, but not deep in Westwood City, that sucks.
Can we, for the next, um, thing, put on, um, have you staff prepare an estimate for?
What else will need?
So we can prove something more official, more organized.
We could look at last time around, see how we spent.
I mean, it all, it all depends on who you pull in because, you know, knowing from the city manager selection of the Monshasta, we had someone from Redding Ridge, Colorado that flew out to interview for that position.
If you're interested on the advertisements, I'd like to have some.
Yeah.
Here's all the places.
Yeah, we'll provide.
Yeah.
For, for the full city council.
Okay.
Should we know where the money's going?
Yes.
About it?
Yes. Um, all right, I think that's all we needed for the city manager recruitment is we have the timeline. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, going back to discussion, so right now we have just other fellow city managers and then the two council members reviewing applications. Did you want to open up for, uh, general public members to review initial application?
The only thing I'm concerned about there is just the idea. Captain, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Is just, uh, what kind of criteria, because I got a feeling this could be kind of a contentious committee assignment, so, uh, because it's got a lot of weight to what's come out of that, how would we come up with the criteria as hot to select the people would be?
Yeah, in light of that, I kind of think that, you know, to, the only way to really empower a person to represent other people is through the official election process. And for a lot of things, citizen involvement, the community does help because they have expertise and things to help, or, you know, perspectives that would greatly help decisions. Uh, but since the decisions are made at the city council level, it seems like you have to include a great many citizens to get the difference, different opinions. But whereas through the election process, each city councillor here.
I agree.
Heard all of these various.
And we will make sure that when we have the three finalists that we make, like I said, uh, typically there's like a presentation and a meet and greet with the general public and then we could develop some forms and everything for people to report back to us about their.
All candidates will be the general candidates. All the general public, they'll all have a chance.
Not all.
Well, you'll have an open podium at a certain time where this guy could ask questions. You put a question out there. So that, and then, and we'll write it down and then all the candidates can respond to those questions. And then, uh, and then we have an interview, like we have before, we interview the candidates.
Yeah.
But the election process is led by council. Too many irons in the fire, you're, you're not going to get a good student.
Okay.
You know?
So it sounds like we want to just add pop on the city managers to get, make sure we get three qualified applicants. We'll shoot for three finalists. Uh, and then we will make sure that when we come to set the schedules for those three people, that we'll have plenty of public involvement.
Yes, ma'am.
With that.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm like we're unanimous on that. All right, I think that we hit everything that we needed with the city manager selection, so we're off to the races and are now advertising it.
Now let's talk about a truck.
Let's talk about a truck. So we will now move on to new business, item 13B, budget amendment and truck purchase approval.
Excellent. So we went out to bid the water and carbon easy new truck. Last fiscal year, we budgeted 22,500, $20,500 for the truck. This year was also 22,500. So we combined those together to get 45,000. Went out to bid, received two bids. The lowest bid came in at 47,942. So that is 2,942 more than what's budgeted. So we are now asking you to amend the budget.
All right, are there any questions for?
Wait, wait, yeah. You go first.
Yeah. What restrictions are there on the type of truck that we need to get for the, the work that it's going to do? Does that have enough insight into the truck business? I'm just curious whether we're restricted to a certain type of truck or whether we could look elsewhere, um, that fits our budget.
That better answered? I mean, so our water department had specifications that they went out and said on the request for proposals that went out to many different dealers.
Do we have that specification?
Like 70, you only got two responses.
Yeah.
That sucks.
It went out twice.
Yeah, it went out twice.
Had to go out twice. I'm not saying you have to say this to the public.
I'm sure that this was covered probably back when you budgeted what, what we needed. I'm just trying to fill in on.
So in like standard specifications, 2019 extended cab service truck, uh, gasoline 6.0 liter greater, high output alternator, automatic six-speed transmission, standard real, you know, four by. So we have a listing here with some other tow-in capabilities.
To buy a new truck or could we potentially put bids out for, um, use inventory? Do you mind?
Yeah, I'm just, I don't. Yeah, the, uh, the, the city of Dunsmere, uh, other agencies I've worked with go through a GSA type where they bring trucks in and then they sell them when they're.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
They've almost a lease.
Vehicle management.
That's right. Uh, with the city of Dunsmere, they, uh, tend to get a truck and run it until it doesn't run anymore. And that's kind of where they're replacing a truck that is at the life expectancy where it's getting too expensive to fix. So the, the thought here was to get a new truck, um, to budget over a period of time to get a new truck, uh, that meets, you know, we really asked the, the operator, uh, to detail what it is in the truck that they need to do their job. Uh, so we gave them a form to fill out, uh, basically expressly detailing what that is. Uh, we sent it out to, you know, all the, the major dealerships, uh, so it's open to any branded truck. Um, and, um, let's see, the, he did some pricing. He looked at other bids that went out in the prior years and felt he had enough money in there. Uh, so the first time we went out.
It was coming out of the water fund or?
It's coming out of the water fund, 100% out of the water fund. Uh, and it, and we, you know, there's, there's been a, the two-year budget cycle, but the, the bids that came in on a second go-around weren't, uh, were a little higher than what was anticipated. Part of this is, it's a utility truck, so it doesn't come with a bed. They have to build a bed on there to suit as well. So that's probably where some of those cost increases came from this year.
So we're talking about an increase of 25,000 bucks?
2942.
3,000.
All right, well, um, just in, in the future, I'd like to discuss with the vehicles being purchased, what the specifications are, have some insight into what options could be available. I don't want to hold this up if we need a truck and, and trucks passing in a way, but I do think there are some other options that could be explored at Dunsmere's financial benefit.
If, if I can add, that's, that's perfect conversation here in the budget. Because in the budget says purchase new truck. So that'd be purpose of none, I know we don't want a new truck, put a budget for it.
Okay, and then, my, where are we at with the old truck and the need for this new truck? Is it terribly pressing or could that wait? And we're exploring for it?
Yeah, it's, it's been something that needed to be, they've already spent probably more on this truck than what the value of it is. And it's at the point, uh, we'll, they're gonna probably let the public works drive it, but as soon as it had no more failure.
It's gone. Okay. Um, the other option might be available just immediately if you could perhaps, uh, put up the interview to contact the dealerships that did you do bid and see if you could get like a two-year-old vehicle front of different truck management company, often it's the same sort of things. Sometimes they're moving things that are not under the E or downsizing and you can often find those at significant discounts.
Do you want to talk about for here or?
Uh, well, I, I don't want to slow this down if it's needed, but if that could be asked and we go in favor of the lower one if it falls under our budget, I, I think that, you know, provided that two-year model difference doesn't create any havoc within the expectations for the water department.
The, yeah, the only concern I would have, it, it, when, when the bids came back higher than expected, one of the things that was discussed in, in Dennis, who was the one that's slated to get this, um, was should we just go out to bid? Maybe I can reduce, uh, one of these, these requirements to get underbid. And we've already gone out to white, so if we went out a third time, and especially since we receive bids, if we said we're not going to accept a bid, we may not even get a bid again.
Yeah, that's what's going to happen.
Well, in the future, I, um, Mark, get on there, Blake.
Are there any other questions for staff before I move us into the public comment?
Well, not the staff, but just let me, if we got to get this truck now, we got to get this truck now.
That's a question.
If you got a trick to show us how to do this, a cheaper wage down the road, let's do it. Let's do it.
So, so again, once we enter into discussion, we can make a motion to, to do that. So I'm going to open up a public comment at this time. If anyone would like to come up and comment on the budget amendment and, uh, possible truck purchase, please feel free to do so.
Hi, Rick Chan again. Live on Butterfly Avenue. Just some questions to tag on to Mr. Ryan's concerns. Perhaps, uh, we could investigate new trucks, um, that may be, uh, older but not used and find that sweet spot when they're selling off old inventory that's never been used in as much as we have to build a bed for it. We could just get the base structured vehicle that's never been used, but is last year's model. So if you can find those dates. It might be, uh, advisable. And the other thing that, in as much as you profess to amateurize the total cost of that vehicle over many years, um, it might be advisable to find out what the cost projections are for maintenance of that particular vehicle. If, for example, it has all of these new, um, technological advancements like rear backup, closed circuit TV and things, it might be more costly, but not advisable to have. A lot of times, uh, if you just have to replace the windshield because it's attendant to so many of these radar and sensor, uh, devices, it may cost as much as 2,000 dollars just to replace the windshield. So your cost assessment, I think, should be, um, tied to your overall cost.
Overall.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment relating this rate, related to this item? Seeing none, we'll now move to discussions. So going back to Councilmember Brian, Councilmember Keisler, um, if you do want to make the motion tonight to, you know, go back and change the parameters, you may do so or, you know, it's up to the purview of the council what our actions.
I would, I would. I know it's going to be. Just because of the fact that I do want to make sure that we can be able to go out to bid and people will understand that they're going to go through the work and putting in the effort, that they're going to get something out of it rather than us just saying, oh, change their mind. Yeah. Because we'd have to go through the same process even if we found another vehicle, wouldn't we? If we could, uh, if we put it out to bid one more time, nobody's going to call us back, okay? So I, I know they need the truck now, so I'm, I'm, I'm in the mindset of let's, let's, let's go ahead and, uh, give them the three grand, let them get the truck, but let this be a learning lesson to us is, uh, we see what happened. So we want to come up with a plan or connections where if we need something again, we're going to get last year's model that ain't never been used, so we'll get a deal on it. We might need to buy a truck. We don't need a bed. We could take the bed off that truck and put it on that bed. Or, well, there's, there's things that we can do to save some money. Yeah, but finding an, an outsource where we can get a deal on trucks, that, that's something that we really need to, to look forward to and try and make some connections.
Would we like?
Right now, we need to get these boys a truck.
Would we like to, um, if, if it is under what we would like to move forward, we obviously do want to make our purchasing policies better. So would it, would it be advantageous to set a review of our purchasing policies recommended to the financing committee to bring back to us to review as well to make sure that our purchasing policies have a little bit more range or recommend some of the things that we've heard today in public comment as well as the discussion here that maybe we could just put in the policy so that we do this from every point on?
Yeah, I think I reviewed the policy my, and, you know, I'm sure that this was discussed, the qualifications or, you know, the specs of the truck and what we needed a long time ago, this was put into two years' budgets ago, you know, so for two years, they've been planning on trying to make this, this purchase. So I, I don't, I'm not assuming that it hasn't been done, but new to the scene here, I'd just like to make sure we're.
No.
We're purchasing intelligently because the citizens of Dunsmere can't afford to lose a few thousand here, a few thousand there, it'd be awful.
Well, it seems to me it's perfect because, um, Councilman Brian is on the finance committee. It seems like the finance committee is the perfect place to look at the policy dealing with purchase of equipment. And our finance committee should have the one thing that was with connections.
Exactly.
There you go. Okay. So, so I'll just put this as a note for myself to, uh, make sure that that's on the future and I know Councilmember Brian is on the finance committee, that we should set that when it's appropriate and have the city manager and the finance director available for that discussion, um, whatever needs to be updated.
So, well, I'd like to reiterate something that was mentioned here tonight that was said, is they should put more money on that truck fixing it than what it's worth.[1658.34]